Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March seventeenth Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call this meeting order and ask Mr. Slade, if he would, with a word of prayer and...
Yes, sir. Let's pray. Father, as always, we stop before we ever begin our meeting to acknowledge that we need you to be with us today. We invoke your power and your presence with us today, Father. We ask that you would bless these men with a gift of discernment, Father, that as they consider the issues that come before them today, that they will do so in a way that is pleasing to you, Father, in accordance with your will. Father, thank you for this place we call home, the safety that we all enjoy. Father, that safety is bought with price. Thank you for those men and women who sacrifice daily so that we might have safety and security and enjoy the freedoms and the blessings of liberty that you give to us in Christ's name.
All right. First up, we've got public hearing.
Just second that.
Yep.
I gotta get oriented here.
It's not often that we start right out of the box, is it, with a public hearing? This is a public hearing that's important. Gentlemen, this has to do with a piece of real property. The address of the property is one sixty-three Pineacre Place. This is in Brandon. This public hearing involves the owner of the property. The records indicate that the owner of the property is actually an estate, the estate of David Key. The point of contact for the estate, as known to the county, is someone named Paige Key. Brian is demonstrating or going to demonstrate with photos the situation that confronts the board this morning as it relates to the condition of this property. So I want you to look at the photos. And Brian, if you guys have any comments or concerns that need to be expressed, this will be the time to do that. That public hearing is open. I will ask, is there anyone here on behalf of the estate of David Key? Anyone, if you'll come forward, please. At the appropriate time after the demonstration, if you'll give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
The pictures are from last year, and there's no new ones up there, by the way. I am Paige Key.
Yeah, hold on, let's...
Yeah, these are current pictures.
So them are current pictures?
Yes, sir. These were taken last week?
Two weeks ago.
Anthony Gammel, building official, and Brett Ishi went out there on the property and looked at the property. So if there's any questions...
Are y'all gone? You gone yet?
Okay.
Yes.
If you would, just state your name.
I'm Paige Key.
What?
We're in the middle of the hearing. Be quiet.
Okay.
Sorry, that was my son. Yes, mostly this is being used for storage and shelter for the animals. I know they're still working on the cat house. They've picked up some. They're supposed to come back and get the rest. I ran out of space to store stuff in the storage shed. I have stuff outside underneath harps at this point.
Well, I guess the very first time that we had an emergency hearing on this, after I think your husband just passed away, and I guess when you came, you told us that you had somebody lined up to...
I spoke to Bert last week.
That they were gonna tear this down?
On the twelfth.
And you were gonna bring in a new double-wide...
Yeah.
What's the...
Well, I spoke to Bert last, on the twelfth, to follow up, and he said the next available date he had open, he was gonna come as long as it ain't raining, because we've been delayed with some rain. It's not exactly solid now anymore back toward the creek. So he is still supposed to show up hopefully in the next couple of weeks, found something else to replace it with finally. It's not overpriced. Everything's overpriced, but anyway, it'll be getting toward down in the next...
Well, I guess for us today, if we're here just to, I guess, what do we need? Declare a condemned or...
So what is before the board today is something different from the last time that apparently Ms. Key was here, whatever time back that was. This is a much different process today. This is a process under Mississippi Code annotated Section forty-three dash thirty-five dash one oh five C to consider whether the property, as demonstrated, is unfit for human habitation, use, or occupancy. This is not a nuisance consideration. This is way beyond a public nuisance. What we're doing here today is presenting to the board, and Mr. Ishi, our fire coordinator's here, because he has, he is responsible for conducting the initial investigations of properties that reach this state of condition. And once Mr. Ishi is satisfied that a given property is not fit for human habitation, is unsafe, then he presents a report back to the Community Development Office, and we bring that forward for the board to consider. So that's what's before you today, to the extent that you need, and Mr. Ishi's report, by the way, is a part of this record, is now a document of public record in this public hearing. And Mr. Ishi has determined that this property is unfit for human habitation, it is unsafe, and it should not be occupied at all by anybody for any reason. Because of that finding, it's now in front of you guys to make that an official declaration by way of a public hearing. Ms. Key was invited to be here to give any information that she can to this board satisfactory that the, that the building is not being occupied, will not be occupied, will be removed within a given timeframe. If she can't satisfy you to that effect, then you have the ability to render it not occupiable.
All right. I guess you, you understand all that? Okay. So I, do you have anything other you wanna say? You're not trying to live there, are you?
No.
Okay. All right. And your, your plans are to have it removed anyway?
Yeah, 'cause I felt like I got the paperwork on one, just waiting for them to finalize and doing all the brother stuff.
So I guess the motion would be that we declare it not livable and...
Yes, sir. You, what you will do, Brad, is the motion would be that pursuant to that code section that I read out, the board is finding that this is, this piece of property, this property is no longer fit for human habitation, use, or occupancy, and that you need to set the timeframe, but that within a given period of time, if that structure is not gone, then the board is authorized for county use, for county forces to go in and to render it not occupiable.
And when'd you say the next available date that...
Hopefully by the end of the month. He says this next available open date, 'cause he has, I forgot how many houses he has going right now, he said.
Ms. Key, the end of March.
I'm hoping the end of March.
I, I would say thirty days, gentlemen. That gives us plenty of time for not only the structure to be removed, but the debris, there's gonna be debris. All of, all of that needs to be gone.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, Bert said he was gonna clean everything up and get it back ready.
That would be my motion.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Okay.
All right.
By my reckoning, that's gonna be April the sixteenth, I think. April sixteenth will be our drop dead date. If the structure's not removed, Kobe, I'm assuming you're gonna get to review that for us, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
So if, if the structure's not gone and the debris removed by the sixteenth of April, then we need to go ahead and dispatch our own forces to make sure that that gets done.
We will remove it then, after then.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Correct.
And by the way, you are authorized under the law to establish a lien against the property for any of the costs incurred by the county in remediating this property. And so I would assume that if the county has to incur costs to do the cleanup here, that you will authorize my office to file that appropriate lien against the property so that we will eventually be repaid, the citizens of Rankin County be repaid for having to use our county taxpayer money to actually render this property un, you know, non-occupable.
I hope Ms. Key...
Okay.
...handle this. Okay.
All right. Brad made a motion. Jay seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Yes. Gentlemen, let the record reflect that. Public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Ms. Key.
Now, we have public comments. First, we have Bob Carey. Stay here. Deborah Hendricks, you'd like to come forward? State your name and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Hendricks, and I live at four eleven Gore Road. I would like to take a moment to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak before you today. I am requesting that you take action to cut down and remove the trees along Gore Road. Due to the severe drought and related insect infestation, the trees have become a hazard. With every high wind or storm event, these trees and limbs pose a significant risk resulting in damage that could lead to injury, death, or property damage. If left untreated, I urge you to address this danger as soon as possible. Additionally, I would like to bring to your attention the need for repaving both Gore Road and Besomers Roads. These roads are heavily traveled, and their conditions require attention. Repaving these roads would greatly improve safety and accessibility for all of those who use them. Thank you for your time and consideration of these matters. I look forward to your response and hope these concerns can properly be addressed. I also would like to note that, I would like to say thank you to Sheriff Bailey and his officers and staff, because I really appreciate what they do for the county. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we, we are addressing and working on some of the dead trees, you know, which there's a lot throughout the county. We're getting to them, you know, as, as fast as we can. And like I said, we're, we are aware of that, and like I said, we're trying to handle that the best that we can. You know, it's just so many throughout the, the county that we're, we're dealing with, as long with power companies and, you know, everybody else. But we, thank, thank you.
And Ms. Deborah, I mean, we, over the last, I guess, year and a half, I mean, we spent a million plus dollars of county tax, taxpayer dollars to take these trees down, but it's just so many right now, and it might take us another year before we can have, get the funding to do it. But we're getting them as fast as we can.
Quick update on that, if you're interested.
The ones that we are seeing now, there's complications where they're close to maybe electric, electricity lines or some other utility, and we have to work with those utility people. So most of the ones that are out there that are dangerous, that have not been cut, are near some type utility, and the utility people are, they play quarterback, and we just, we do the hard work. But anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you give us an update on...
Yep. Quickly, well, first, let me make sure you guys, I know you're already aware, but we've got our good friends from Congressman Guest's office here with us today, Chad Brady. Thank y'all for being here. Appreciate you guys. I think y'all are in town to take a look at some, some of the storm debris. And so we appreciate the fact that they made time out of their schedule to come by and visit with us, and grateful for them and the participation that they bring to the table on everything that we're trying to do, both at the state and the federal level. We get a lot of help out of our folks, and I can't say thank you to them enough. We, in that, in that respect, we have made approaches, especially in Washington DC, to try to get us some help on this issue of the deadfall, this issue of our drought conditions from two years ago, and now the, the storm debris that results as a, as a, you know, byproduct of having trees that have, that are dead and dying. And so that we are substantially impacted by that. As many rural miles of road that Rankin County has responsibility for, we see it consistently across the county. It's not just District Four, although I think my supervisor in District Four would tell you, he's got an enormous share of that. But you've got a lot of deadfall that's out there that we have to deal with. We have been well received in Washington, and we have legislation that was made available and was pending. Unfortunately, our, our Senate and House didn't see eye to eye on the budget. And so because we have fallen into the continuing cycle of continuing resolutions, we saw our pending legislation kind of fall by the wayside. It's gonna have to be stood up again for twenty twenty-six. And so FY twenty-five's appropriations that we managed to get into bills that were pending has now been put on the shelf. And so we've got to go back somewhat to the drawing board and hope that our leadership in Washington can get together, get on the same page, and actually pass a budget. And if they can do that, then we should have some relief that comes our way. You asked for and, and received an appropriation, the language of an appropriation, that would have provided about six and a half million dollars to help us with our deadfall across the county, which is a bit, that would've been a big lick. That would've helped us a lot. And we're just gonna have to keep working hard to see if we can get them on the same page up there. And then if we can get that appropriation, I think we'll be able to really attack our deadfall issue in a, in a major way.
So Mike, do we have any idea of how much we have left?
About forty percent. We're estimating we've got down right now.
Okay.
They're still, they're still down to two.
Well, that's...
Problem is, is where we've cut some trees, like Key says, I mean, we've got some of these trees that have been impacted over the years, you know, from the beetles and whatever the drought caused, everything is kind of a delayed reaction. We, we've had some of these roads cut, and now we've gone back and found thirty more trees dead on these roads. And I've, I've looked at Gore, and it's gonna take a, we're gonna have to give a Central Electric, most of those are entangled in the fire line. And Central Electric usually works pretty good with us. We just have to work with our schedule to get that done.
Have you reached out to them yet on Gore Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we, we've been in contact, and we're just trying to get the mighty ones first.
Okay.
Bye.
We appreciate Ms. Hendricks coming. She, she left, so she's not here to defend herself anymore, but Mike provided us with a list. How many did you say, Mike? Fifty-four? Going back to...
Sixteen.
Fifty-four work orders.
Fifty-four work orders.
Oh, dealing with dead trees?
No.
No, sir. Just, just issues, all of them submitted by Ms. Hendricks.
Oh.
All, all of them submitted by Ms. Hendricks. These are, these are work orders that have actually been worked. So I, I, we just, I just was taking advantage of an opportunity to explain to you that we, we haven't been unresponsive.
Mike, it's gonna be hard. You need to do a better job than that.
Right. Well, she did, she did thank, you know, everybody.
Does she own all of Gore Road?
No, sir. To my knowledge, she does not, but she, she may be the, she may be the unelected mayor there, though.
That might be a reason District One hadn't been getting any attention. It sounded like...
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
When Craig recognized these men in the back, I looked back through there, and I saw another one. Our mayor is sitting in today. Mayor Butch Lee is here.
Well, he's hid by the gentleman in front of him. Could you stand up, sir? Recognize? Okay, there, now I see. Okay, all right. He was kinda hid there. All right, let's see. Next on public comments, we have Steph Quinn, and you might have to pronounce your name.
Hi, my name is Mark Fudgeoshi. We're actually reporters from Mississippi Today.
All right. Would you like to come up and state your name and...
Yeah, sure.
Yep. If you would, just state your name and address.
And before she does that, let me remind you guys, we have decorum rules here. This is public comment, not public question.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Steph Quinn. I'm a reporter from Mississippi Today. I've been working with my colleague on a story concerning some purchases by the Sheriff's Department. We just wanted to sit down with one of you, any of you, and ask a couple of questions. So we're just asking if you'd be willing to talk with us at some point. Doesn't need to be now.
The answer is no. The answer has consistently been no. The answer has been provided to these people by Jason Dare, the attorney for the sheriff. They were told that because they can't follow normal journalistic rules, because they print partial statements instead of full statements as instructed, and the only permission given was for a full statement to be printed. And they chose, for whatever reason, to print a partial statement because they can't follow journalistic rules. They have forfeited their opportunity to sit down and visit with anybody from Rankin County until further notice.
We just wanted you to know.
Thank you.
We just wanted to make sure.
Right. Thank y'all for being here.
Directly.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Just to clarify, was Jason Dare responding on behalf of the Board of Supervisors?
He, he represents Rankin County in the Rankin County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on. I believe I saw the public comments. Old business.
Motion approved.
Second. Jay made a motion. Scott seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Consent agenda. Has everybody had time to look over the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Motion. Second.
Scott made a motion. Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approves. All right, next we got our tax assessor, Ms. Stacy. Next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Three minutes?
You want me to restate my name and my address?
No, no question.
I've got the decorum rules. Okay. Item A, I'm requesting approval to adjust the twenty-four homestead exemption supplemental rule.
Motion. Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, requesting approval to change, for changes of assessment on twenty-three and twenty-four real property assessments.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, I'm requesting authority to void the twenty-three tax sale and then the tax bills for twenty-three and twenty-four for pin number three-two-zero-three-five, and I request that the tax collector reissue tax statements for twenty-three and twenty-four tax years.
Motion.
I second. Scott made a motion. I seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And item D, requesting authority to publish the homestead exemption public notice deadline in the Rankin County News for this week, the seventeenth.
Motion.
Second.
Scott made a motion. Steve seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mike Harrison, road manager.
Good morning.
Come this on, on the Gore Road.
Good morning. Uh, we got some permits to approve this morning. Got Hickory Ridge, District One, uh, with ceasefire, Big Deer Valley subdivisions, and Mulligan Road.
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Brad seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, request approval of Southern Rankin Water Association on Old Pearson Rankin, I mean, Old Pearson Road, Hicks Lane, all in that Monterey area.
Is this the one that we're currently in litigation with?
Yes, sir, it is.
I make a motion to deny the quest.
I second. Nobody's, nobody's seconding it. So I'll make, I'll make a motion approved.
I think.
I made a second.
Can I, can I interject briefly, as a part of, yes. So to Jay's point, we have active ongoing litigation with Southern Rankin Water Association, rising out of Gunner Road construction. You guys will remember that we kind of got sideways because Southern Rankin did not want to relocate their water line infrastructure out of existing county road right-of-way onto their own property or outside of our right-of-way so we could improve Gunner Road. They were insisting that the county had to pay for all of that relocation, even though they had placed it inside the county right-of-way. Okay? It's not the way it works. And so the county requested that Southern Rankin relocate its water line infrastructure out of the right-of-way so that we can improve Gunner Road as a part of the Gunner Road project. When, when the parties could not reach any form of agreement of any kind, the board authorized the filing of a lawsuit on behalf of the county to essentially to be allowed to relocate Southern Rankin's water infrastructure for them, and then hold in abeyance for, until a later time, the court's determination of what the cost to do that relocation actually is. So we are now teed up to go back to a mediation that would allow the parties to talk about how much did it cost the county to relocate all that stuff, and how much of that cost should be borne by Southern Rankin Water Association. So Jay was suggesting that until, I think, Jay, I'm putting words in your mouth, but I think you were suggesting, until we get that resolved, we should, we should not allow them any sort of permits for any additional work until we can get that resolved.
Because this, this, being as they permitted it is inside the right-of-way, guys.
I just don't think we need to have a match between, we know what's going on, shutting down progress, if they need to continue to do some work. We're going to court over this. And to me, that's kind of Mickey Mouse to, you know, not let them have the permit to do what they need to do. I mean, we're affecting other people other than, you know...
The leadership.
Right.
The leadership, if Scott is here, and until we, you know, push the issue, he gonna keep dragging it out.
You're, you're right, but just 'cause one person does that, do we need to retaliate and, I mean, or let the courts handle it and...
Well, it might encourage his board to step up and do it. They should've done it smartly.
Well, I think it's had two years to step up, and, you know, nothing is done. I, I'm just, you know, saying I don't think we need to go down that road, but if, if, you know, we get the votes on it, I mean, that's just my, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, but it's...
So...
I, I think where we are positioned, Sid, you made the motion to approve it. Brad, did you second that motion to approve?
I second Jay's motion not to...
I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Right.
I misunderstood.
But now if we don't have the votes, they can, I guess, revoke.
Well, we gotta keep motion.
If we don't get the votes.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. And we need to call a vote. If it dies, then we can have another vote.
Okay. Jay made a motion. Brad seconded a motion. Any further...
To deny.
To deny. Any further discussion? I think I made my further discussion already.
[laughing]
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, aye.
So for the record, I got outvoted. I appreciate y'all stepping up with me.
Mike, you got a point of contact to report that back to?
Yes, yes. We'll report that back. Till the, I reckon till we get the others resolved. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Y'all okay with that?
Is that, is that the import of your motion? As soon as we can get the litigation resolved, we can reconsider this? Right. Okay, very good. We'll report that.
Okay. Uh, move on to C, request approval for Evergreen Water Association, Tricken Bridge, Wildwood, Andrew Chapel. Uh, it's gonna be on the lower end, Andrew Chapel, Steve. Adams, all those roads out there.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Scott seconded a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, request approval of Center Point, uh, for Tricken Bridge, District Four, Andrew Chapel Gas Line. Mike?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, Atmos Energy on Vernon Jones Avenue, District Five.
Motion approved.
Second.
Jay made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all. And what we're running into is most of these water associations, we're trying to get them to come in and do their permits because, especially through their ARPA money, they're just now spending for upgrades so we can kinda hopefully keep it out of our right-of-way. Or especially in the road.
But, I mean, why would they need a permit from us, so they are putting it in, back in our right-of-way?
Right, when I request these permits, they are in the right-of-way, 'cause we told them if they stay out of the right-of-way, they don't have to do a permit with us.
Exactly the way it's supposed to work, Dylan.
So, if, if one day we expand this road, that we're gonna be dealing with the water line?
Yes, sir.
That's in our right-of-way.
And I, you know, I mean, I, I, there's some language in our permit that says if they put it in our right-of-way, they, they gotta move it.
Which, by the way, is the law, and so, it's, it's, really shouldn't be necessary for us to include that, but it's good on the front end for us to establish, you were told, if you put your infrastructure inside the road right-of-way, it is subject to having to be relocated in the event that the county decides to expand that road. You gotta relocate it at your cost.
That's right, Mike, are they putting new water line in, in these places, what they're doing?
Yes. Just upgrading, yes.
So, they're upgrading their water line?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh?
They're just now, they're, where we've had our ARPA money, I don't know what their, theirs is called, but.
Probably got some grant money.
Their grant money and stuff where they've got it put together, that's why we're starting to see some of these water li, water associations permitting, uh, up these jobs.
So, we're, we're gonna deny them to put new water line in, but they can put it in private on?
They can put it in private, yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't know.
Actually, you are permitting on that, on that request right there, the water.
Yeah.
Any other, other than this situation with Southern Rankin, and that's special because we have an ongoing lawsuit.
Right.
Right? But any other water association that needs to get in the right-of-way is welcome to ask, apply through a permit, for permission to go into county road right-of-way and lay water line.
Right.
They can do that. Uh, they, they, a lot of them choose to get a private water easement, water utility easement from a private property owner. And if they do that, and the county then expands the road, and they have to relocate that that's already on a private easement, we have to pay for that relocation, the county does.
Right.
I mean, Brad's, Brad's got a water association that's been upgrading, I don't know, for about a month, but they've been on private, so they hadn't had to request one.
Right.
Craig.
Yes, sir.
Explain, I, I think I understand, I mean, I'm, I'm sure I do. What we're talking about, what you were just talking about, these water lines going in our right-of-way or private, uh, and then Mike said that there's some verbiage in the permit that explains that if we have to move, if we have to do work on our road or ditches, that it's their responsibility to move their lines?
Yes, sir.
And that's exactly why we are in litigation?
Yes, sir.
Is because misunderstanding, or maybe not misunderstanding, but, uh, it's something similar to what we're doing here than, uh, and that is why you probably would, uh, advise us to not take any action while this legal matter is in hands of others. Is that, am I correct?
Uh, well, no, I, there are reasons why we might allow, in thi, in this case, of Rankin, there's, there, there may be good reasons, I think Sid stated one clearly, which is you're, you're affecting customers of Southern Rankin who are looking for improved water access. Uh, and so, those customers are gonna get hung up because of ongoing litigation between the county and Southern Rankin. So, I think that was the point.
If they were to choose to go on private property?
Absolutely.
Then we wouldn't have this discussion at all.
Well, right, but you're not gonna go up under private if you got to bore up under a county road, so that, that's the thing.
All they will submit is their border crossings.
Oh, but, you know, some of these roads, you're gonna have to bore up under and.
Which that would, that would be, I mean, that's, that's pretty well with any of these water associations, some point they gotta cross the road.
All I was saying is that we're just throwing it back on the, the customers, you know, that have nothing to do with this. You know, all they're trying to do is get, get their water, you know, it's not, they're not in.
Well, the customers can give them their, the property that's put there.
Right, well, you're, you're right, I don't know all the.
All we gotta do is approve things going on, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I think.
Hopefully this again settles things.
Yeah, I think to Jay's point, uh, the more people that understand the substance of the litigation, the reason for the litigation, the more people that become aware of that, then there may be some incentive on part of the water association to address this and get the litigation resolved.
Alright.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Hope I don't have a flat nowhere. I know four people are not gonna come help.
Just a pit crew right there, Sid.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, y'all got me puzzled for a while.
Nobody coming to help you.
Mr. Parker, let's move on to you.
Alright. Item A, Mr. President, is on our Pine Brook, uh, ARPA project. I will recommend an approval of payout number six from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services, two-hundred-eighty-one thousand, one-hundred-nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents, and the authority issued the check, that's a District Two project.
Second.
Scott made a motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, Mr. President, is on our Melamed ARPA project, program element four-point-oh-nine. We recommend an approval of payout number five from To Be Dirt and Contracting LLC in the amount of nineteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars and fifty cents, and authority issued that check, that's a District Four project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, Mr. President, is subdivision Grace Acres, it was originally a preliminary plat at its Grace Estate, so we just noted that. Uh, construction is complete on the, uh, improvements, recommend approval of the final plat and the letter of credit in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, two-hundred dollars, that's a District Four developer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion, Brad seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mr. Slade.
Good morning, gentlemen. The first three items under my section are set public hearings for April the seventh at nine AM, you can see what those are, Daniel, Rebecca Harris, Janice O'Neil, and, uh, our Rankin County initiated dimensional variance.
I make a motion?
Second.
I made a motion, Scott seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item, uh, element D, uh, item D is the public hearing for the vineyards at Castle Woods, this is a conditional use permit request, address is four-twenty Vine Drive, it's a District Two property, I'm gonna open that public hearing. Uh, the vineyards at Castle Woods is requesting a variance to construct a maintenance building, a fitness center, and a trash compactor, and this will, uh, be a, uh, request for a twenty-one-foot variance between the existing and the proposed maintenance buildings, as well as a fifteen-foot variance between the existing apartment building and the proposed fitness center. As part of their request, they have agreed to install a sprinkler system in the new maintenance building if this variance is approved. According to Rankin County zoning ordinance, a minimum of thirty feet is required between buildings, and so, they're, that's why they're, uh, offering to sprinkle the building because it will be in closer proximity than the thirty-foot require, requires. Uh, we've received no calls in opposition on this matter at this time, I will ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the vineyard at Castle Woods' request for these dimensional variances, is anyone here to speak in opposition on that?
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on the matter unless the board has requests. You guys with the vineyards by chance? Okay, unless you guys have, uh, questions of the applicant, uh, at this time, we can close that public hearing, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Scott made the mo, motion, Steve seconded motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, next item, Mr. President, is item E, a discussion of proposed amendments to the Rankin County zoning ordinance. Uh, you will see that you will be, uh, asked to take action to set public hearings for consideration of amendments to your zoning ordinance, so I wanted to highlight that, you'll see that, we'll do that after we get through with the discussion. I'm gonna ask Ms. Gray Oates from CNPDD to come forward at this time, she's been waiting patiently. Thank you, Gray. Uh, and Gray's gonna walk you guys through, by the way, you've been handed, um, a, a listing of the proposed amendments, so as Gray discusses those with you, uh, take a look at the sheet there.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Glad to be back with you today, we're gonna bring a couple of amendments both to the comprehensive plan and land use plan, as well as zoning ordinance, so you will see two public hearing notices that we'll ask you to take action on when we finish. I'm gonna walk through some of the highlights of these changes, some of it is just cleaning up, um, and errors or typos that held over from our twenty-four amendments, so, uh, just understand that some of that is very minor in nature. Um, one thing I wanna note, in the comprehensive plan, we are making a change, um, to the definitions of low density, moderate density, and high density, not residential estate, Mr. Bishop, I wanna make sure you hear that. Um, any new development in low density, moderate density, or high density must be served by a wastewater system owned by a public entity. Mr. Bishop, that excludes residential estate. They were left out, wanted to make sure we made that point. Um, we are also, so that way you have publicly-owned wastewater systems, um, in those more dense subdivision developments.
Right.
Residential estate can have private on-sites, like your personal onsite system, but not in your more dense areas.
Just take care of the ARPA company, they won't do their own sewer system.
Um, we're also introducing a new concept, it's a growth boundary, it's gonna show up on your land use plan, and then it'll carry over to your zoning map, and I'll explain that, but this is basically a line that's gonna kind of curve the eastern side of the more dense development outside of your municipalities plus the reservoir, um, with the exception of Pilahatchie and Puckett, and it'll curve around back to the south. That is where we want to define, outside of this growth boundary is very, uh, rural in nature, it does not have a lot of infrastructure, our road network may be not up to, um, dense capability at this point, infrastructure, water, don't have sewer in those areas, all, uh, stormwater drainage becomes an issue, so it's saying all dense development should occur within that growth boundary, back towards your urban areas, and outside of that should remain more agricultural and rural in nature. This is a very common practice in other states, um, it's not something that's really been introduced in Mississippi yet, but we're gonna jump out there and go for it, it is a common planning practice, though, this is not something new that we have, you know, created. So, you will see that on your land use plan, and then there are a couple of properties, um, that were low density that we're gonna move to residential estate that were in that area, um, on the land use plan. Moving into zoning, barn dominiums have become very popular, so we wanna add a definition of those, clarify where they are classified so that your community development staff doesn't have to constantly say, well, yes, it's considered pre-cut, we're just making it clear, a barn dominium is considered a pre-cut, um, structure in defining that. We've cleaned up a couple of drive-in versus drive-through restaurants. Uh, we are adding an overlay district, this overlay district is gonna be in District Four only, and it's not even gonna be the entire District Four, uh, you'll see that on your zoning map, this is to, again, it's in those heavily rural ag areas. Um, it will help some of the storm drainage issues we're having, some of the road system issues that are coming up, and it, it just puts a bit of a control on that so that the character of that area doesn't change as rapidly. Um, those regulations are in the back, again, it's going in District Four for now, um, it can be used elsewhere in the county if you see it so fit.
So, what are some of the things we're doing?
With that specific, so it's gonna require a little larger lot size. Um, you're gonna do, let's see, let me get there, five acre minimum lots, um, your yards are gonna be the same at fifty front yard, um, a requirement of fifty feet in your front yard, ten on the side yard, twenty-five feet in the rear, um.
Setbacks.
Setbacks. But you're talking ag, five acre minim, minimum, that's not, that's not a bad setback when you're, when you're on that. Um, some allowed uses are moving to more conditional uses, just to control development in that area to make it more of a truly, um, ag-friendly area that's not getting encroached by residential development.
And, and outstripping the infrastructure that is in place that can deal with denser type of developments. It's, it's a resetting, so to speak, a resetting of the expectation with respect to residential growth in that District, District Four, so it only applies to District Four, and, and it's only a, it's a defined area, so in District Four.
It's a defined area within District Four, it's essentially your currently zoned ag areas for the most part, eh, kind of outside of the, um, Mount Hailum Stomp Stoll, come down across Pisgah, hit about I-20, about Pilahatchie, and go back up to the eastern border of the county.
Gray, is it appropriate for this board to consider things like the impact in the school district of residential development, can you explain that?
Yes, so we've actually been working in partnership with, um, the school district studying the Pisgah zone, they, as you know, had the big bond project a couple of years ago, added on quite a few classrooms, they are already in mobile classrooms at Pisgah due to growth in that area. We have said since the twenty-twenty census numbers came out, that District Four was missed, um, we think that's where a lot of the population was, based on building permit data we've analyzed, we expect to see additional growth in that area. Um, so this will help keep it without, allow growth, but not overextend your infrastructure to where you have dirt roads or very small roads that you're trying to get school buses and other large vehicles through, or people expecting city services in an area that's extremely rural.
Managable growth.
Manageable growth, absolutely, this will help the school district catch up, in a sense, um, so there's, it'll help your infrastructure catch up as well. Um, and again, it's just in that area for now, we can entertain otherwise, um, but then there's just a couple of other things, uh, we're addressing some parking lots, making sure parking lots, accessways are, um, clearly defined and understood that proper maintenance will be required of those areas, um, putting some teeth to that language, so to speak, so that you can make sure those are being maintained, um, that they could, if they start having craters and ponding water and all of that, it can be resurfaced. Also, you can require that, um, gravel lots cannot allow loose material, or gravel accessways to commercial properties cannot allow loose material onto the roadway.
I, I have a question on that, is that limited to county right-of-way, or is that included? It's not all, it, it can include any public road, subject to the board's discretion, where this board finds that there is loose material, is being allowed to impact a public road, state, county, even in, inside a municipality where it's coming, where you're gonna have situations from time to time where a piece of property is in the county, that the access that the access to get to that property is outside the municipality. Any of that's fair game, where the board makes a finding that, that there is a, an impact on public infrastructure. You would have the ability to require something to be done to keep that loose material on the private property and not out in the public roadway.
Would it impact any structures that are currently like this, or will they be grandfathered in?
No, sir. No, sir. This is not a grandfathering, it's not eligible for some sort of grandfathering. You're making a finding that that's a problem, that it's, it's become a public problem in some places, and it needs to be addressed.
So if there's an issue, it would come before the board?
That's correct.
To be addressed.
That's correct. As a zoning violation, I think we would go through the normal process. Brian and his team would make contact initially with the property owner, lay out what the violation is, ask that that be corrected. If it's not corrected, you've got the avenue of a public hearing to correct it.
And again, this applies to commercial. So I know in some of our more rural areas, we have gravel drive, private driveways to our residents. We're, we're just addressing commercial at this time on those. In talking to community development, accessory buildings have become a bit of an issue with commercial properties wanting to drop those. We are now requiring that to be a site plan review process on accessory buildings in commercial and industrial zones. Let's see. Accessory buildings would also be administrative review in your residential zones. And again, that's administrative under a conditional use, so they could just come to the, to the community development. They can approve it. It doesn't have to come before you. Simplify that process, but that way it eliminates some of the issues and the conflicts we've been having with those accessory buildings. Still allowing them, not disallowing them, just making sure they're properly placed, and we're not slipping something in that is going to be a dwelling unit that was not built to be a dwelling unit. A storage shed is not a dwelling. Let's see. And then the sewer, we discuss that again in each zoning district to make sure that that is clarified. So residential estate is going to read that do or do not have any public or any other approved, is how it reads it now. It will just say do or do not have public. So that any other approved language is going away. You can have private onsite in ag and residential estate RE1, RE1A. But once you hit R1, which is where your subdivisions are, R1, R1B, R1C, et cetera, you got to have publicly owned wastewater infrastructure. So just clarifying that, making sure that it's very clear throughout. And that's really the gist of these changes and the modifications that are being made. There, there were a couple of parcels that were R1 in very outlying areas that were immediately adjacent to otherwise ag properties that we're suggesting rezoning to RE1. They don't have a lot of road access. They're very rural. So we are making that recommendation. Any questions?
You have the summary of the changes now, and so I would encourage you guys to take that home, study it, please. Your hearing will be set for the 7th of April, so, so you'll have time to kind of marinate a little bit on these. Gray's always going to be available. Lindsay, stand up real quick. It's Lindsay Sellers. Lindsay is the new Gray news. She's, she stepped in once Dave got too high and mighty and was.
He's saying he wasn't gracious with his presence.
Exactly.
He's probably watching right now.
Now that Dave is too good for us. So we, but, but I think we are better served, to be quite honest. We have three of them, so y'all tell us in that. So Lindsay's going to be also assisting in a, it's going to be, eventually, she's going to be working directly with us on a lot of this stuff at a, at a high level. Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Craig.
Yep.
And this might not be the right time to bring this up, but we have recently been, had to look at age of mobile homes that are coming in, and it's not real defined. It's not real clear. Is this the wrong time to ask, can we just have a hard and fast number? That we don't allow something that's more than 15 years old to be brought in? And that, that's just a number I just grabbed out of the air, but.
Yes, sir.
To where our people have something that they can just say, this is this.
So you have a standalone manufactured home ordinance? It could be amended to address that? That addresses tie-downs and those sorts of things. In like the overlay district, we could apply something to a, a set area. Just as we have required increased acreage, we may consider a change there as well. Those are definitely considerations that can be made.
That, that would allow you guys to have a first look.
Yes.
See how regulations of that type could potentially be implemented, but they would only have the limited scope on the initial, the front end of just being in District Four, and that section of District Four where that overlay applies. That would be a, an opportunity to say, how is, how is that regulation impacting citizens? Not countywide, but on a very narrow scope. If that makes sense to you, then I'll work with Gray on some language that might be suitable to Steve, is his district, that would address the age of manufactured housing. None of the other districts would be impacted. They would still fall under your standalone ordinance.
Which is 20 years? Is that?
I believe it's 20.
Right now it's 20?
And I will say, other local governments in the state do have a newer, a five-year or less manufacturer date requirement. So from 20, to, to no limit to 20 to five, we, we've seen it all.
What is, what do we consider as far as ad valorem, the age? There's some age that they are no longer assessed any value.
I, I believe it's 10.
I think it's 10.
So after they reach 10 years, there's no ad valorem? And we're talking about mobile homes that are coming in, not existing, that's on the ground, I mean, which those fit the same ad valorem. But if we're going to bring a mobile home in, and it's more than 10 years old, they are not required to pay ad valorem. Is that correct?
Well, they do.
I believe so. I was just going to.
They, they are taxed differently.
Uh huh.
And that depreciation, after about 10 years, I believe is the number, they're pretty much $100 or $200 a year. So you're really not collecting much off of them. But that all goes back to how are they tied in? How is that foundation set? How are, are they real property, personal property still? So there's some, there's a lot that goes into taxing those. But yes, the, the 10-year factor does come into play.
Mark, you got something?
Yes, if you're going to address, and this is just from being a mayor in a small town, and what we did in Richland, ours is the 10 years. If it's 10 years or older, it can't come into the, regardless of how nice it is.
Is that current, is that current language?
It's current. It's current language. Cannot come in and be used in the city of Richland. The other thing we did that has had a bigger impact at that is we require a concrete slab to be poured for that mobile home to sit on. And within that, then you have to have your tie-downs, that security ties, that mobile home. And what is the two-factor thing? One, we're currently now not seeing water or sewage standing under these homes that causes the floors to rot out. That was a big problem that we had solved for years, that water standing under them. Now, because what you do, even if they skirt on people, come in, put stuff, you cut grass around it, soon you got, the lagoon is under the house instead of on the outside. So draining off is an issue. The other thing, too, with that slab there and the tie-ins put in, then you bring the mobile home and set it on it, then you secure it to that slab, it is less likely to be blown over. It may be blown away because of the storm, but it's less likely to be blown over, causing personal damage and personal property damage. And those are two things that are, cost somebody more money to come in, you know, with the mobile home. But if you're looking at protection as far as safety, long-term use, and overall, just keeping the place looking better, that those work, that works for us.
We've seen that elsewhere.
And you've seen other counties in our state already implement five years or newer?
Mary, do you have a, do you have an ordinance similar to that?
Uh, not to that degree.
Not to that degree?
Yeah.
We're going to be with the mayor tonight, therefore, so it's double duty right now.
Keep in mind that, as right, the county's a little bit unique, and we actually have county zoning, county-wide zoning, and not every county in the state has that. In fact, I would say the majority of our counties don't have.
That's, less than 20 counties in the state have zoning.
You've got to keep in mind that the extent of our regulations has kind of been visited upon us because we have so much residential development in the rural areas outside of municipalities. So we, you know, Rankin County had their choice, and this way before any of our time, 2004 was when zoning was implemented. Jay may have been. Now, I don't know, were you on the board when they adopted?
I was.
Okay. Jay's the only one responsible for that. Yeah, so, so it's a little bit unique in that we, we deal with some things that are typically municipality-type regulations. We, we get to deal with those because we've got so much of our county that falls into a category that is a municipality without being inside municipal boundary. Mr. Barry?
I know. I wasn't saying.
Thanks, Eric.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, the next, the next part of that particular agenda item, now that we've gotten through the discussion, is I'm going to need a motion to set a public hearing for April the 7th at 9:00 AM for the adoption of the Rankin County Comprehensive Plan, and an action to set the public hearing for April 7th for adoption of amendments to the zoning ordinance. So there's two public hearing notices. One is your comp plan, which you will amend, which includes your zoning map, and the other is your amendments to the zoning ordinance, comp plan, zoning ordinance. So I need a motion for both of those to be set April 7, 2025.
I'm going to make the motion to set them. Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Next item under my section, gentlemen, is a discussion of and potential action to clarify language associated with a resolution setting a county-wide referendum. As you guys recall, a couple of board meetings back, the board considered and adopted, at least in a tentative fashion, we adopted or said we want to adopt a resolution that sets a special election for a countywide non-binding referendum regarding whether the citizens of Rankin County desire for the Board of Supervisors to form a countywide joint water management agency to manage stormwater and drainage within Rankin County. I, I have in front of me a proposed resolution to that effect. That resolution is purporting that it, it comes under the authority of the board to set non-binding referenda as determined by the Mississippi Attorney General's Office through various opinions that have indicated that the board has the authority to set special elections that are non-binding referenda. I want to keep stressing that. You, you are, basically, you are asking for the, the opinion of the voters. You are not asking for a decision of the voters. You're asking for their opinion. Do you, as a qualified electorate in Rankin County, desire to see the Board of Supervisors establish an agency that has the authority to address stormwater management and drainage issues in Rankin County? That's the question. So I wanted to remind you that I have that resolution available and ready. I would like to go ahead and clarify that you're adopting the resolution as presented and authorize the Board President to execute that resolution on behalf of the board. Here is the operative language. This is what would appear on the ballot. And I wanted to get clarification about this language, because once we adopt the resolution and present the resolution to the election commissioners for the purpose of preparing for the non-binding referendum, they can't change the ballot. So we not, we got to make sure we got it right. We got to, we got it like we want it. Here it is. This is what appear on the ballot. The Rankin County Board of Supervisors is considering the creation of a countywide joint water management district or similar agency whose purpose will be to address drainage, erosion, and flooding problems throughout Rankin County and its cities. The proposal includes the establishment of a fee to be paid by property owners on an annual basis to fund the district's operations. Listen carefully. The estimated annual fee for residential properties is $100 per year. Blank line that says, I am in favor of the proposal, and there's a blank line that says, I am against the proposal.
Did it say anything about commercial?
No, sir. There is nothing in here about commercial. That is because that is a work in progress, and we are not in a position to be able to tell this board meaningfully what that number is likely to be. I think there's ongoing work even being conducted now, currently, to try to figure out what will this agency, if established, be able to generate from a revenue perspective by various property types? The one that we have always been directed clearly by this board on is whatever y'all come up with, as far as a revenue scheme is concerned, whatever y'all come up with, the amount to be charged to the residential property better not exceed $100. That's been consistent across the board.
Does that include rental property?
It includes all properties that are classified as residential.
But municipalities will be able to opt out?
Municipalities will be opted out unless they vote through their governing authority to participate. They will not be included unless they opt themselves in. It's different from the way they set the marijuana statute up, Brad. You're, you're in unless you vote yourself out? Uh-uh. You're out unless you vote yourself in. That's just because, that's the way the law is structured.
That voting in or out for municipalities would be a separate, and they would set that up on their own?
Yes, sir.
If they, if they want to do that.
That's right. Steve, they don't have anything to do until there's an agency that's established. And under the law, this board has the authority to establish an agency under that statute. No, no other entity is in a position to be able to do that. If you think about the only one of these that exists in the state of Mississippi, which is the Yazoo Water Management District, that entity did not exist until 19 separate Boards of Supervisors from 19 counties agreed, came together and agreed, this is the district boundary. And it included all 19 of those counties, or some portion of those counties. All 19 of those Boards of Supervisors had to get on the same page to get that done. Once that was done, the agency was established, and then any of the properties inside that district are separately taxed for the revenue to be generated for that district. So you're, literally, you're saying, hey, this is not binding. You're not voting on anything. We are asking for an opinion. Please give your opinion. You're in favor, or you're against.
So y'all want to change any language in that? Any thoughts?
I think so.
So how much this going to cost? So this is just going, they're going to go out and vote on this?
Yeah, on the election that nobody's going to show up for.
Sid, they're actually indicating their opinion.
Right. Right. I mean, how much is it gonna cost us to do this?
About a hundred thousand.
We, we've heard in the neighborhood of about a hundred thousand to conduct a county-wide election.
Just to get their opinion. So once we get their opinion, then it has to go back again for.
You, you guys will have to decide what to do with that opinion.
No.
We got the authority to do it today, but rather than imposing it across the county, it'd be a good idea to let everybody have their say. And if Brad says most of them won't show up, at least the ones who are in favor hopefully do.
My deal was is it needed to be an election where it's county-wide, across the county. Just, I mean, right now it's gonna be set up in November to where there's only, I think, one judge and.
District four and judicial district three.
A lot of folks are not even gonna know there's gonna be an election. A lot of the districts. Get out of there. That's why I thought we made it the first time. We, we had it last.
Well, we gotta make the decision today or table it or what?
He's serving the unexpired.
That's what we're voting on, is the verbiage, what's gonna go on about.
Yep, that election.
I'd like, cause we did it in front of me.
He's still in the unexpired.
I mean, have you read it?
We can take that.
I mean, if y'all good, I mean, I hadn't had this person to, to read it in front of me.
Well, let's get to the next meeting, and then we can all get everybody a copy.
Okay.
Right.
Alright.
Yeah, let's just do that.
While, while we're on the subject, I, I wanna, I wanna also clarify something. This is, this is important to, uh, the folks that you, um, in your discretion, that you give the responsibility to make sure this stuff gets done. Uh, y'all, y'all set the policy and y'all give directive action, and then somebody else has got to implement that, right? So your, your team that implements your decisions, we need some help here. What, what we need to know, and what I want y'all to be thinking about, you know, I have to make a decision today, is does this board intend, once it, once it considers and adopts a resolution to establish this non-binding referendum on this question? Once y'all do that, is there any intention on this board to weigh in on the matter of whether people ought to be in favor or not? Do you expect some publicity about this, information about this? Do you expect, uh, the, the citizens of Rankin County to be educated about this?
So do we need to set up a, a budget for it? Or is that what you're getting at?
I, I think there probably could be, depending on how the board wants to do this, there could be a responsibility on this board to, to fund uh, some sort of educational campaign of some kind.
I would hope so. We definitely need to try to educate everybody what we're working for.
So what, what your implementers didn't want to do was to assume and not ask the question.
Okay.
And if there's an expectation that the team would be responsible to organize something like that, we need to know that now so we can get busy. It's not, it's not a very long time to November, by the way. So we need some direction on that.
I would like to have as much, uh, education between now and November as we could have.
Okay. That's all I needed, was direction on that. What, your team will now begin the process of figuring out what that's supposed to look like, and we will have to routinely interact with you guys about that. That'd be, that's why I'm asking, is because you guys are gonna have to actually be involved in that process, right? So.
And then we can have a copy of the verbiage that you are suggesting we use for the ballot.
Yes, sir.
And maybe address this at our next meeting, which.
April the seventh. Of course, we got a work session on the third. If y'all wanna talk about it on the third, we can be prepared to talk about it on the third, but that's up to y'all. I, I would want you to adopt it on the seventh.
Yeah.
Alright.
We'll get you a copy. It'll be coming. Uh, gentlemen, I've got a matter that I'm gonna need to address with you in executive session, uh, important, and also, um, exciting. Do I have one more matter? Did I skip it? I'm sorry.
Gee, skip it.
Yes, yes, let's don't skip this one. Uh, item G, gentlemen, is authority of the county coroner to handle cremation of an unclaimed body. Uh, you see the gentleman's name there. Pursuant to the county's indigent cremation policy and authority to issue check to Dean Memorial upon receipt of the invoice, uh, your indigent crem, uh, remains cremation policy, uh, requires at any point in time that the coroner has determined that there's eligibility under your ordinance, there is eligibility then for that to be, th- those services to be provided. Dean's gonna do that, and you're authorized to issue a check upon receipt of the invoice. There is a limit on what they can charge. I think that's four hundred dollars. Is it four hundred?
I think four, five hundred.
Uh, I, it's, it's less than five hundred. I'm pretty confident it's four hundred dollars. That's, that's been our standard.
Most approved. Second.
Jay made the motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Ah, motion carries.
Like I said, gentlemen, I've got a couple of matters that are, are gonna be appropriate for executive session.
Okay. Mr. Hicks?
I want to clarify one thing. So we actually, after ten years, there's a nominal assessment rate on mobile homes. We base that on the twenty-year life of a mobile home.
Morning there, Mr. Hicks.
Good morning, Mr. Bishop.
Boy, like that suit there. You doing it.
Item A, uh, under my section is approval of payout number six. This is to Thornton Construction in the amount of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. This is for our reservoir use project.
Make motion to approve. Second.
Steve made the motion, Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Ah, motion carries.
Item B is approval of payout number eight. This is to Southeastern Pipeline Environmental Services in the amount of one hundred sixty-two thousand, seventy dollars. This is on our oak grove ditch project.
Motion for it. Second.
Do I have a motion?
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Jay made the motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Item C is acknowledgement of receipt of one thousand eight hundred and seven homestead applications. They came from the, uh, tax assessor's office to the Chancery Clerk's office. That's for the month of January twenty-five.
Just eighteen hundred?
Eighteen hundred and seven, just.
Motion approved. Second.
Jay made a motion, Scott seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Um, item D, our office is requesting approval to apply for the NDEQ non-competitive grant. This is our local solid waste assistance grant in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars, seventy-one cents, and authority to execute those documents.
Motion for it. Second.
Brad made a motion, Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Motion carries.
Uh, one item under additional business, as you have seen, our Mayor Butch Lee is here. Um, I didn't invite him to come up. Do you want to address the board? Yes. Oh, Ed Matthew Smith. Matthew, you can come to.
So I sent y'all the text. I didn't have it. I was gonna have a hard, "Good morning."
Good morning.
"Thank you for your work." Uh, "Doing a lot of good work," and if it was easy, anybody can do it. So bear that in mind when you talk about zoning and decisions you gotta make and all that kind of stuff. It's not easy, but it's for the betterment of Rankin County. Uh, so we have installed a, I didn't have time to print what I text you this morning, but it's a connector piece. It goes on the north end of the nine-one-one building. It goes from Marquette Road behind the building all the way over to the trails that we started. There's a fifteen-foot easement there. And, uh, we were successfully getting a second grant, uh, through the Mississippi Outdoor Stewardship Tr- uh, Trails Grant. About four hundred thousand dollars. And what we wanna do is continue that trail, uh, along that easement, along that edge over to our trail. So I can envision an engineer here can speak to us, since we've got multiple engineers in here. One of them'll know what we're talking about, but I can see digging that clay out down eight or ten inches, backfilling it with good, uh, ground, concrete, and kind of putting a concrete slab on there. Uh, the overall goal to that at thirty thousand feet is looking down to be able to tie in now, as we come through the city hall parking lot from the library, which is tied into cross gates, to be able to get under the interstate to tie all that together, uh, that ongoing effort. So that's what we're gonna try to do. I see you trying to bring it up on your phone. So it runs along the fence of the right-of-way four I twenty, uh, behind that building. And, uh, so the terminal on one end is the unimproved trails that we have, uh, in Quarry Park. On the other end is the, uh, multi-use path. It's concrete that we put out there. I don't know if you've been out there lately, but finally got it. That was the last leg of getting that asphalt down and getting the striping down. Uh, I personally think it makes our county buildings look a, a lot more professional, so I, I like that look, and we're gonna continue that look all the way down Marquette Road. Next bite will be down to the railroad tracks, I suspect. So Matthew, you wanna add anything to that?
Um, yeah, I would just say that, uh, I believe the purpose of being here today and the request is because we just completed that nice, uh, ten-foot concrete path out front. Instead of hauling equipment down that path beside the nine-one-one building in there, our request to Mr. Hicks was, could we come across in front of the, uh, nine-one-one? I'm assuming that's what y'all call that first little building on the right when you go underneath the interstate, instead of going.
Stores, pretty much.
Correct. Coming across their parking lot to access our path.
Where are you gonna access it from?
Ac- across, so it's, say you're turning into the four H building.
Yeah.
That parking lot, it may lead to your right, and it should show it on that drawing. The drawing's got a.
There's more buildings there that aren't on here. Those extra, so where the nine-one-one building is, that they, they built a couple of storage buildings to the right right there. They've been there for several years.
I didn't see them when I was out there last week, Friday.
I'm sure.
No.
This blue, highlighted blue is that metal building where they use to store like their.
We built pretty quick, Matthew.
Sir?
We built pretty quick down there.
Over the weekend?
Yeah.
Jay, that's that one Richard Wilson built, probably fifteen, twenty years.
And I may not have clarified exactly where we're talking about, Jay.
The light blue one is the one they talking about access and right, or cross.
I can, you may come up there and look.
I mean, it's the first one you come to.
That's correct. You see this green stretch in front of the building?
Yeah.
That's the access that we're requesting.
That's the driveway to the current extension.
Now, we're just requesting permission to come across there, to construct that trail. Won't be long. That way, we're not driving down a brand new trail.
Y'all not planning on, like, storing anything in front of this building? It's just access.
It's just access. Concrete trucks. Because we got a brand new trail.
That's the ten one, plus that concrete up.
That's just our access.
So all they want is access.
Y'all, y'all just asking for access to.
And the goal here is to be done by. City's got a big event at M Theater, Jubilee Days and all that. He'd like to have that as soon as possible. We're trying to go and get it done.
Anything we mess up will clean up. The grass.
Eight-foot wide concrete path.
I don't have a problem with.
Brian, you got anything you want to add?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, I've, I've seen the plans and everything. My only concern would be that there would be materials stored in our parking lot to make it convenient for them, but it would cause us having problems getting our free boats out, our mobile command, or anything.
My, my goal would be, we're not really storing anything there. I mean, the, the city's got the crushing area right down the road, and we got all kinds of places. We definitely won't, we'll work with Brian. We won't be blocking their access.
Yeah, as long as, you know, you make sure it work with, with Brian and there's no issue, you know, uh, block anything that we need, you know? Y'all aware of that and, you know, work, yeah.
A little bit. We store between the road and the sidewalk. We won't block any access anyway.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, as long as the asphalt and everything stays clear, but you've got a lot of big turnaround with a lot of those trailers and stuff like that.
We can handle that.
Say with all that construction there, might be some damage to our parking lot. Y'all gonna put this up on land?
Have you looked at it?
The mayor.
I'm just being, I knew that was coming.
The mayor did say he was gonna, you know, fix and replace anything, you know?
Did he say that?
He did say that. Well, yeah.
Did he say that?
Uh, the most impactful has no impact on anything the county's got, but any impact of folks I care about would be a master garden on the other end. You know, and I can actually see, you know, Matthew and I going to talk about this, but, uh, some extending some sidewalk down perpendicular to that. That way, they can plant between those. We can make some walkways in there between those beds. It might improve the master garden area a little.
Y'all just work with it.
Y'all good with that? Cause that would be outside our easement. Everybody good if we work with them, if they want something, tie some of that stuff in? Cause that could be an amenity, like, I hadn't thought about, like Mayor saying, if people walk on that trail, have a chance to go over to the butterfly garden or whatever they may have over there. Maybe some gravel trails. Then they want gravel to, I don't know.
Is that, that's our property. Is it titled in Rankin County?
I think it's technically Rankin first. We may have moved it in.
Okay, alright. I just wanna make sure we've got some interface with the title owner of the property to, to make it clear. This is to protect the city as well. I, I want the property owner to give permission for any sort of, in the nature of a permanent improvement on that property. And if that's the county, then this is the right place for that to be addressed. I don't have any idea if it's titled in the county or if it's in Rankin first, or what it is.
I thought we did that like a year or two ago.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be good.
Y'all some nails, Brian? Develop the district, that's what I'm sure of.
One other thing that I'll probably be talking with you guys later is with this walking trails surrounding, uh, most of our building up there, I may be coming back looking for some money for a fence, uh, you know, because there's a lot of valuable items in that. Plus, we've also seen, uh, with the use of the walking trails, some people have cut, pulled their vehicles up into this parking lot and parked, and then they go get on a bike in there on the other end. If we were to have an emergency, we've got no way of getting anybody. So eventually, I may need to, uh, block off access to that parking lot area. It's not really parking lot, it's more of a driveway for us. Be aware of that.
Okay. Y'all agree with that?
Sounds good?
More questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Either way, on the property, we're gonna report back to you. It is, it is, you know, we'll be clear.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you. Was there anything from a, from a action standpoint?
Well, I'm, I'm just glad to hear the city's doing the work. Uh, we've got some issues with the contractor out front, just utilizing on facilities that's their own. And I don't think the city's gonna be, that's something I would say.
Yeah, we did, we, I, hopefully, hopefully we got that resolved once it came about. I mean, we did try to get on with that. The city will be doing the, the prep work. Of course, we'll have, the city doesn't have the forces to pour the concrete. We'll have a contractor in there pouring the concrete, but we're talking about three hundred feet of concrete versus whatever. We just poured a mile of it or something, so.
Y'all gonna be done by May?
That's the goal, be done by May first. You know, we may have a little bit of dress up to do, but.
All right, let me write that down, May first.
Look, the mayor's already heard it and said it, so.
Well, I got a document, May first.
Yeah, over and before.
I do think, have y'all seen the handrail that was put up in front of Regent A? Y'all noticed that? Man, I thought it turned out to look really good.
I, I agree with it.
No, I, I think, I, as long as we've got a document that sort of defines that pathway, y'all, have y'all marked it?
The easement's, the easement's marked out there right now.
Yeah, so I, I think as long as we can see what the easement is and we tell the contractor, whoever that is trying to access it, whoever, city forces or the contractor, let's make sure they stay in, in those confines reasonably, uh, then I, I don't see us having a need to do anything else. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Do we have any, is that all on additional business?
I make a motion to discuss the need for executive session.
Second.
Jay made a motion to discuss the need for executive session. Steve seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Sir, this is gonna be acquisition of property, uh, it's gonna be personnel, uh, and probably, since Trey's here, we're gonna probably be talking about some litigation too.
I make a motion going to executive session for those reasons.
Jay made a motion going to executive session. Brad seconded motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?